Monday, February twenty second, twenty twenty one at six P M. Attendance, I note that all members of council are in attendance. In addition to our chief administrative officer, Chris Spear and our clerk and senior administrator Paul Knopper. I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'd like to move, we pass the agenda. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Bishop and a seconder. Houseley grew, thank you. All in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. I'll now look to disclosure of conflict of interest on any matter before us in this committee in this meeting. Hearing none, we will move ahead to the introduction, consideration and passing of bylaws and motions. And the first matter we will deal with is P W twenty one zero zero one, the active transportation trail Saint Andrews. And I believe that Mr. Spear has presentation for us in that matter. It's a spear.
Thank you, worship. Just give me a millisecond here to get set up.
Yeah, your worship, do you mind if I just present for two seconds?
Go right ahead, Mr. Knopper.
Thank you, your worship. So for anybody that's participating tonight, you'll be noticing that it's only council on Zoom. Due to the technical difficulties we experienced last week, we will be participating via Zoom only for council and Facebook is where to be viewed. If anybody from the public wishes to ask a question to council, you can email it to P Knopper at town of Saint Andrews dot C A. Or if you want to speak directly to council, we will be allowing you via Zoom only during question period. You will still need to email me P Knopper at town of Saint Andrews dot C A for the access information. At this time, I'll pass it back to CEO Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Knopper, and thank you, council, for giving me this opportunity. Talk to you. On the agenda, it's listed as two items, the active transportation trail for Saint Andrews, as well as the COVID nineteen downtown plan for two thousand and twenty one. Really, it's the same presentation, so keep that in mind. So what this is really going to be talking about.
Rest, we can't see the.
Active transportation.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna try again there.
That's good, Chris.
Yes, yes, thank you.
So what we're going to be reviewing, council, is act of transportation within the Tennessee Andrews. As council is aware, it's been a key priority of council and community members and sortie and prior to that, the Kiwanis. I'm trying to create a safe and alternative transportation system that allows people to get out in the great outdoors, to walk safe, safely without that. Running into traffic and as you know, the Van Horn Trail was part of that legacy that moving forward. So in mid two thousand nineteen, there's a joint application made to Infrastructure Canada between sortie and the town of Saint Andrews. For one and a half million dollars, basically to create and upgrade trails throughout the town. To make a premium trail system within the municipality. We did get a letter later in that fall or over the winter that anything that wasn't water or wastewater systems was not supported by Infrastructure Canada. So we just let that lie and thought we we that it was not going to be funded. And we're just continuing to work on small segments as we could. And then in August of twenty twenty, council approved the coastal. Link trail segment, of course, by this point, everybody on council and just about all our viewers knows that coastal link goes from. Saint Stephen Callis border all the way to Saint John to go with the Cross Canada Trail or Trans Canada Trail, my apologies. That goes across Canada, but as well as I think it's the great green trail from remember councillor who Michelle would know, it actually goes from this. From Florida up to Maine. And then, lo and behold, in October of twenty twenty, we were notified by the government of Canada that we're being considered for the application for one point five million dollars. So it hasn't been approved, but it is being strongly considered as long as we meet so many criteria and it's currently under the COVID. Plant COVID investment plan, part of the recovery and under a segment that's related to recreation and I guess. Looking for people to get outdoors and to get away, to get from being inside, especially in larger areas like arenas and gyms. Seems to frozen my in council can. Can you see the map now?
No. Brief history.
More times seems to be technical difficulties, my apologies, council. This doesn't work, I'll walk you through it. So do you see council the map yet?
Yes.
Alright, so with the map, you can see that this is the coastal link trail that was approved by council. Back in August, as you can see, it comes from both one side of the one twenty seven, goes down Marine Science Drive. Cuts across the stop portion of Brandy Cove Road, then under Brandy Cove Road and Joe's Point Road. On this particular map, we're considering two different loops, whether it was down Water Street, down King Street or sorry Queen Street. And then to meet up at the Van Horn Trail, just at the end of Water Street, cut up along the trail that goes between Public Works and the campground. Think continue along up towards. O'Neill Farm Road, cut across Katie's Cove and then down through the cemetery, eventually back on the bar road and back up to the one twenty seven. And so even though this is the map that was approved by council, this funding doesn't have to be directed towards that particular project that. My recommendation would be, of course, to invest in that since the chosen, but we're clear that the funding is still up at council where it should be spent. But obviously, the segment is an important part of the decision making. So from, as you saw, the report I gave to council as well as the. As well as on here, there's really two segments that we have to consider for this trail system. I'm going to be talking about the plaque which has its own challenges than those areas that we'll consider outside the plaque. So within the plaque, one of the biggest challenges is street widths and in an ideal world, we'd have isolated streets or trails for everybody. Completely away from traffic with a large meridian, but as can be appreciated by everybody, that's about impossible through the downtown of Saint Andrews. And then the historic business district is about the widest streets in town, but on both ends of it. So from Harriet to Elizabeth and then further down from Princess Royal, right around the point are much, much narrower. So it makes trying to run two way traffic plus lanes there a bit of a challenge. And so one of the things that may have to be considered by this council or future council is about creating either a seasonal or full time one way traffic around the loop. Or at least in the downtown, to be able to make this work to the benefit of walkers, bikers, pedestrians, et cetera. And unlike last year, we could probably do it all with giving up only one side of parking. So as opposed to completely shutting down parking on both sides, we could make this work as seen before. By just extending the lane in one side, but leaving parking along the downtown on the other side. Now, if there if there was a one way loop, and this is for just discussion purposes only for so for anyone who's seeing saying this. This is just being introduced to council at this time and and there'll be public consultation. And maybe I should have chosen a better color for the highlighter, but essentially it would start at. The corner of Harriet, Reed and Power, likely you'd go down Harriet down to Water, then go all the way around Water Indian Point back up in Prince of Wales. All the way to back to the top of Prince of Wales and Harriet and then back down. It's it would allow adding too much infrastructure and allow us to go. The lane that be usable by everybody and frankly, that loop is probably one of the most walk loops in all of town. So anything we can do along there. Until council of someday decides to invest in sidewalks and things along there and make changes, go for all infrastructure that will allow this to be a better loop. But in the short term, the staff's thoughts and possible recommendation that a one way loop should be considered. Over the next few years until we invest in infrastructure that could widen things out if that's the way council wants to go. Now, other connecting segments that are included in the report include Brandy Cove and Joe's Point Road. As you know, we stopped up Brandy Cove Road over a decade ago between basically along the Algonquin Golf Course. And that road is deteriorated. Don't say to an unusable part, but it has to be brought up to a certain standard before we should even allow active transportation on it. The problem with that road is it's also a utility easement for N B power and we have our own water line there. So it's just not as simple as creating a six or seven foot wide stretch there for bikers and walkers. They need to be able to handle trucks to be able to go down there, meet the needs of the various utilities. And so that can be done though, and originally we talked about back in the budget that is about six hundred thousand dollars to do that road as well as. Part of Joe's Point Road. So basically it'd be resurfaced right from Marine Science Drive all the way to Water Street again. A big part of the Water Street on Joe's Point Road to boat a quarter of the way down the road has been resurfaced previously due to infrastructure projects. So it's going from where we stopped with those all the way to the end of the road. Another segment that should be considered is a cemetery road between Katie's Cove and the cemetery segment of the Van Horn Trail. There was basically two ways of thoughts between staff that were brought to you. Now, number one, as you know, it's a dead end street to the cemetery and so hypothetically very little would have to be done. You know, with some signage and sharrows that there was very, very little traffic along there. But there's also an opportunity because the town owns land on the other side of the road from the Katie's Cove exit that we could run an independent trail. So essentially people would get on the Van Horn Trail on Water Street, then have an isolated trail all the way to Katie's Cove, go through that. Even at Katie's Cove, there's an old abandoned walking trail that can be upgraded. And then brought out across the street at cemetery under the land owned by the town at the ball field. And then segment that along the ditch on the other side of the ditch, all the way down to the Katie's Coke or sorry to the cemetery. Vault area where the next leg of the Van Horn Trail goes on all the way to the bar road. That's, you know, it's about three hundred thousand dollars to do that part. Another segment that we could revisit is the bar road. So as you're aware, when we redid the bar road. Two years ago, he created the one meter lane, but as you know, especially in the summer and traffic diminishes island, there can be a fair amount of speed along there. So sortie in the past has expressed interest about creating. Additional trail along the easement there so that you'd have road ditch than a eight foot wide trail that goes, you know. I think the length of the road from from Moat at least down to the Van Horn Trail segment by Rose Lane. So that's fairly pricey and there might have to be discussions with landowners, but that would create, complete the loop. It also at least potentially to as as that road is all downhill going one way. If you're a bicyclist heading down the road to Minister's Island, you're going to build up quite a bit of speed. So if you had a second segment going up, that could be for slower walkers and bikers that are trying to get up the hill. And so potentially in a high speed area during the summer months, that'd be this a pretty safe alternative for going along there. Then there might be other segments, and Osori had some listed that they were considering. But there may be others that can come through public consultation. One discussion that's been on for a little bit is Cornelia Street. But as we've discussed several times over the last few years, there's a lot of infrastructure work that has to be done under the granite Cornelia Street. So we'd hate to see us invest in pavement along that stretch of road and then have to tear it up within five years to to create water lines and things. So I don't know if that is a wise spending of the money at this segment, but certainly within the next decade, once that work is done, it can be. Engineered so we can accommodate some type of bike lane connecting the two sides of the trail. So the next steps council is, all of this is really dependent on waiting confirmation on the funding. And so they were in the queue. If we've made it this far, it's a good sign, but it's not guaranteed. And so we've got to answer some more questions and we've been recommended by government new bunches to be considered. And it's being set up for Ottawa for final confirmation. So hopefully we'll have that sometime later in the spring, knowing we can move forward, which means we wouldn't be able to move forward really until the the fall. Council needs to identify if it happens, what the twenty twenty one priorities are. And I'm just saying that probably the non-plattex expenditures would be the easiest thing, basically back to where if we're not approved until late spring, we won't have the time to really. Get it all in place before the summer tourist season, so we could do the planning and engineering over the summer and then do it later in the fall. And then if once we come up with a plan for anything in the plat, we could put that in place for early next spring. And then tying it in is the downtown pilot project for phase two. And earlier today, I sent a the front page of the Telegraph, it shows what their plans are for vaccination and as you can see. It's going to be a bit of time before we're out of COVID, probably into the fall. So it's very likely this tourist season, we're going to be there. So council may want to consider another phase of expanding the downtown sidewalks and things. So back, we had a lot of concerns about the complete loss of traffic. So I'm wondering your parking. If tying it into this, we could allow parking on just one side of Water Street that allowing the other side to be for the act of transportation. Then we're gonna, I would recommend considering expanding the length outside the historic business district. So last year, I think it was only for five blocks and maybe even three by the end, if I can remember. But it might be worth considering dropping it down to Mary or Adolphus Street on one side and extending it past Princess Royal, possibly do Augustus on the other. Just to get people's input on the one way and with the parking allowed, it should be good. But all of this should probably be done with some heavier public consultation during this winter and spring. And then I think the one way option, Indian Point should be really look at hard for this year. Again, as we know, it's one of the most prominent walking areas in all of Saint Andrews, extremely busy in the summer. We've been lucky that we haven't had any accidents there. But I think if we did one way, we could create a walking lane right on the pavement for people and both tourist and. And residents alike would would find that really easy or acceptable and a big move forward. And the thing is too, I feel that just doing it on the Indian Point would be a lot easier to direct traffic down that way. That people aren't, it's not going to be impeding people as much as doing it right on the Water Street in year one. That if people, if it's cut off in Augusta Street, like I meant, mentioned in my report at either sides, that within a. You know, within a couple of weeks, most people will get the sense of direction and then be able to get to any parts of the town with very little effort. The two things that'll happen that we'll have to consider is A, the people on Augusta Street will have to be consulted a bit, but we may want to lower the speed along there if it becomes a bit of a thoroughfare. But then we'll have to work with the Kiwanis campground to make sure the traffic knows how they're supposed to get down because we try to avoid them in the downtown and. Make sure that they get the right exits and then that they get down to Water Street to make the loop into the entrance. And as mentioned earlier, council, I did had provided much more in depth report, but I wasn't planning on going through it in detail right now. So I'm really throwing it back to you for input and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Council, questions for Mr. Spear?
Yeah, through your worship. As far as the as far as the funding. Opportunities, I'm taking that staff's looking for direction on what we would like to spend it on, to summarize it very simply. I guess the question is, is when would you need to know that? Is that something for this council? Is that something that's for next council? The reason I'm asking that is we pretty much have two months left and if we're going to do any real public engagement, I shouldn't say real, but any level of public engagement, we are. We're getting down to the wire now for such major changes to the town block.
Well, council has mentioned in my report, the funding partners are look are looking for a couple of basic answers. One of them is to try to identify what our priorities are. We don't have to be finalized, but kind of I've laid out something as suggestions. Are you okay with that? You know, we could at least say, well, this is what we're going to do somewhat and then expand on it in the future. Because the money doesn't have to be spent in one year. We have, from I understand, three to five years to do it all. So it can be done in phases. And then what is important to them is to figure out where we'll do new infrastructure, if that's going to be consideration too. So there's big questions on the bar road and the cemetery lane will be the two that I'd come to mind where we're going to be creating potentially looking at off street trails. And so they'd like to get her and to be, I suspect that'll go a long ways in helping to determine. If we get the funding that they're looking for people to do more items like that, to try to create new infrastructure, not just to resurface the roads, paint a line and call it a day. So it's to try to see where you want to go with this. It'd be good to get direction to and while I agree with the deputy mayor that this council is running out of time, we could be getting a consultation process which could go over into the next council. Just to, you know, throw the questions out there, have public meetings. This is kind of what we're thinking, whether it's through a surveys or write ins, whatever. We could start getting the community's input onto that, but either this council or the post election council can certainly work with to make decisions moving forward. But we're kind of just at that funny time period where it's, I know it's getting the end of yours, but we kind of get to keep some of these. Projects moving ahead. And so I'd like has at least be given direction and not completely set on it between now and the end of May.
There were a number of things that you were talking about there. The bar road, like a second lane for slower bicycles coming up back up the hill and maybe walkers that are trying to get back up the hill and things like that. I think that second lane, second side would be really valuable, a thing to have and. I would think doing the non-plat section early on, then it doesn't interfere with maybe so much the downtown area. And the idea of making Indian Point one way, would that be just for the summer months or or is that all the time?
It's whatever council chooses. I mean, it'd make most sense to probably only do it seasonally, but really, if you keep. I have concerns if you keep changing pattern, traffic patterns every six months, it's going to be, people are going to be. A little harder to try to remember to do stuff. So to a certain extent, especially when the season's over with at Indian Point, the traffic really drops off because the campground's closed. Walkers aren't necessarily walking out there between the end of October and early April. So but. Either either or at this point in time.
I think if you said we're going to make it one way for June, July, August and September, that's pretty well our busiest time, right? And then everything slows down or so far usually slows down in the fall and winter months. But I'd love to see it one way because there's a lot of people that walk and bike around there and I think it would be a lot safer for people that are walking and things. Thank you.
Also grew, you had your hand up.
Thank you, your worship. Just just a couple of items is is not number one, one of the feature elements of our Van Horn Trail. I think that has made it such a success so far is that there's a separation between traffic and pedestrian slash bicycles. It's it's a dedicated trail, so you can go on the trail with your your family, your your eight year old kid. And know that you're there in safety and the same thing for seniors who maybe have mobility difficulties. It's a safe venue for people to to go through that recreation. The other issue, and and this is something I I go back to the slide that Mr. Spear put up, and I think that it was a very good one. About the possibility of making Water Street around Indian Point and Prince of Wales a one way loop, sort of a ceremonial route. When you come to town, you go down Water Street, you see the beauty of our town, then you're you're struck by the nature, the the inspiring beauty of the point. And then you come up and you 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 see the magnificent Algonquin Hotel. And to me, that is the best route for somebody coming into town to see and and all of a sudden say, wow, this is Saint Andrews. And many towns have that kind of ceremonial route. If it's made a one way, things like traffic safety will be improved, especially with the delivery trucks and. We we have a constant issue of R Vs going in both directions right now and barely missing each other. The other thing it does, it provides a safe pedestrian cycling and venue for handicap and accessible handicap persons. And the lane is that that active transportation lane would be physically separated from traffic, which would make it again, that safe venue where you could go. Traveling around. And one of the things is is we as a council have an opportunity to make a huge positive change for the community at this point. And I think if we initiated the discussion, much to what the deputy mayor was saying, we could start the discussion. Here's a proposal, get people talking about it, see where they want to go. And and I think that would be a very positive step for this council. The other thing is if we did do a one way loop around Indian Point, it would address all of our COVID nineteen issues because. You would have essentially one side of the street. If you combine the sidewalk with the active transportation lane. It 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 has, it would become a pedestrian corridor. So it would allow people to spread out, to have that social distancing and to move around and it would be a real benefit for the downtown core. So I think there's a lot of pluses here that we can look at. The other point I just wanted to make was that when Mr. Spear mentioned Brandy Cove Road and Joe's Point Road. I had a little bit of a red flag that went up because it sounded like we were using active transportation as a means to do road maintenance. And road resurfacing and and we have many utilities that are in areas that are not serviced by roads. So I don't think we should be building a road for N B power to service their utilities. I think that the 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 funding for the active transportation is meant for just that, active transportation. And I think that we we can stretch our dollars as far as we can go and and make sure that we get on that active transportation map. And become a destination of choice for people that are in that kind of, who like that kind of activity. This is this is a game changer, I think, for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, council group. Anyone else have a comment?
Your worship, council.
Yes.
I would wholeheartedly support councillor Gru's comments and agree wholeheartedly with with many of the things that he said, including. The benefits of running the 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 front street one way. the benefits of running the, the, the front street one-way. How it'll improve safety, not only for pedestrians and cyclists, but also for cars. Directing the RVs down the front street, there would be more room if there was a bike lane, there'd be more room for the RVs to go down and we'd create less, less conflict with the, with the delivery trucks as well. Certainly, St. Andrews is becoming a destination for cyclists and outdoor enthusiasts, hikers and, and bikers. And I do think that that one-way concept certainly goes a long way to to enhancing, enhancing and continuing to fulfill that mandate as a, as a place to come and recreate outdoors. I do think that the, the connection between Katie's Cove and the Bar Road is kind of low-hanging fruit. And if we could work with the Algonquin to figure out exactly where we could get through there and, and make that connection, that seems to be the most obvious one to do. The Bar Road is a bit, a bit more problematic just because of the, the topography down there and, and as Chris alluded to the, the hill. But I think those are challenges that can be, that can be met. Crossing the street at Cornelia, I remember our, our old friend, Counselor, Counselor Boyd and I getting in our chicken suits and trying to get across the street there at Cornelia not so long ago. When we were looking at active transportation as a course I was doing at UMB. So that, that those, both ends of Cornelia, there are challenges with getting across the road if not for me, but if you had some kids with you, might be a spot where you could have a, just a flashing light or something to get people to slow down. Like you see in other communities like Fredericton, but I do agree with Counselor Gru, this is potentially a, a game changer for the town of St. Andrews in terms of active transportation and getting the word out that, that we are, that we are a destination and we have a, we live in a beautiful place. And people want to come and enjoy it and they should be able to do it safely. And this active transportation plan certainly goes a long way to fulfilling that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Michelle. Anyone else? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, so I guess right now, I, I don't know, I'm just not in a position like, I, I think that this is gonna require significant community engagement. We're really altering the way that our town plat is. And I don't doubt for a moment that the one-way won't be welcome and stuff like that, but to put in a bicycle lane, although myself, I, I think I would use that from time to time. The transportation plan also did allude that only 2% of traffic is preferred on bicycle. We do in fact have 73% of traffic in the town of St. Andrews that is automobile and we would be cutting parking in downtown St. Andrews once again in half. And then as far as, you know, expanding the sidewalks and things like that, I, I don't know how it can be really done because that's a bicycle lane. It's not like we can tell people to walk in a bicycle lane. They still have to have the sidewalk. So I'm not saying no, I'm just saying that the public really gonna have opinions on this and we need engagement from them and the business community. I do think, agree with Counselor Bishop though, that there is some, some projects that we should, we could push ahead. With engagement, of course, because there is homeowners, but Cemetery Road is a great example. Right now people get off that trail just and they don't know how to get to the newest section. They get lost in that, that, that corner. And the other thing too is that's a steep hill and traffic flies through there. You know, the safety is very much something that should be considered. So I think things like that are very easy right now to kind of have a quick engagement because if you're a homeowner along that, yes, you have a right to have an input. But I think some of these bigger conversations that to the, to the point of, of our CAO is maybe we get the ball rolling and let the next council decide because ultimately any decisions that we really make here, we're not gonna be the ones of the council to feel it. It's going to be the next council that actually hears about it. And as we can tell from last summer, even a temporary change is a lot of people had a lot of different opinions on what they felt was best for this community. So that's enough to make me pump the tires. The only other thing I'll add is in the staff report is they made some different recommendations on, on different ways to separate traffic versus the bicycle lanes. Although those metal things, they look very simple. I'd certainly like to see like a, an actual photo of them. Because right off hand, I know it's double the cost, but having a nautical field, any barrier or even planters or something like that, I think overall one thing that we can learn from the pilot project is perception is everything. And if it's visually appealing, people are more likely to embrace versus something that, that looks metal or, or cold. Really careful on what we select there as well. But yeah, there's a lot of conversation. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying that I, this isn't something that I plan to rush ahead, hopefully over the next couple of months and have to make a decision on.
Thank you. Counselor Bishop, did you have a comment?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the discussion.
Hello?
Yeah, Counselor Harrison.
Yeah, I guess my kind of two cents was on these trails, I used to live in Ottawa and they have just amazing multi-use trails there and there are walkers, bikers, scooters, everything else is non-motorized going together. It can be seemingly hectic at times, but it works. And you put your bell on your bike and you, and you don't abuse it when you're on a trail. You're like, they're, 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 they're not made for racing. And I think we could do that here. And I guess my main comment though is it looks like we do have another summer of COVID coming up. And that is very unlikely that it's gonna be back to normal until at the earliest the fall and probably not till early the next year. So I think, and I think the part of the discussion tonight, I, I believe on i- is, is that, that I mean, possibly we try out the one-way idea with a bike lane in lieu of our idea last year. And because it also works as the kind of COVID idea to give us more space. But maybe this year, we can compromise and have the one side with, with the parking. But I mean, that looked pretty good to me. As for the separators, yeah, I guess it's tough to spend a lot of money until we know what we want, but I think the deputy mayor is right that what we did last year by not wanting to spend a lot of money kind of had a lot of blowback. So I guess maybe we either have to really make sure people knew that this is another temporary year till we buy the permanent ones or just go ahead and kind of make the decision. But thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison.
Through you, your worship?
Yes.
And
Counselor, I could do.
Yes, I agree with the one-way street. Like I think that was a, a positive thing that happened last year, although there were several that complained. I think like the deputy mayor says, the metal dividers or separators that we used were not good. Although we were trying to, you know, to do it as cheaply as possible. And I still think they worked, but they were not aesthetically pleasing to a lot of people. And so I don't know what you're going to find that it's going to be economically favorable for our town as well as aesthetically pleasing. I think that's gonna take some time, but like the deputy mayor says, our mandate is coming up very quickly in two months. So, and staff has made great recommendations and the, the report that I received, so we have to start it, but we're not gonna probably be the ones that finish it. And I like the suggestions that were made by Counselor Gru and whatnot. And I am a little bit concerned about Brandy Cove Road. Mr. Spear, can I ask a question? Is it car width or trail width that you were going to expand that? If you were going to do that, that does make a difference. I know I was on the council that voted to make Brandy Cove, you know, a closed-in road because we felt it was what was right at the time. And I don't feel that we should be, like Counselor Gru said, spending money on something for NV Power or anybody else. It's whether or not that is gonna become a road again. After all the deliberation that we went through to make it not a road. I can see it being a trail for, you know, bikes or people hiking or whatever, but not to pave it, but maybe use that plus or quarter minus that we used around the point that makes a a good walkway without paving. Paving seems to be something that the town doesn't want all over the place, but this would be an alternative to. And I just want to know whether or not it's gonna be car width on Brandy Cove and Joe's Point Row, you know, like making it wider or whatever and, or trail width, which would be kind of nice for sorting and continue.
If I may, your worship?
Yes, certainly.
So, so the quote that was included that council seen a couple of times for 600,000 definitely means it's car width or not. But we, for the Brandy Cove stopped up portion, I think we certainly have the ability to make it a lot narrower because even if we only fixed up half the road just for the trail portion and left the other half in a, you know, in a current state, that should be sufficient as Counselor Crew pointed out for utility vehicles to get down. And we want to revisit that and see what type of shape the road was in after. Joe's Point Road beyond the stop-up is a different story, meaning that it is a street, is an active street. So I don't think you'd only pave that. You'd either not do it or council would commit to doing it in phases later on as part of their annual asphalt resurfacing program. So instead of using this funding for there, we could just do it for the Brandy Cove portion, make it wide enough for the active transportation to match what's on the Van Horn Trail. And then just slowly work on the active part of the streets as money permits in order to get that brought up to a standard that's suitable over the next, you know, three to five years.
Thank you, Mr. Spear.
Yeah. Mr. Spear, could you just, I know it was in your report, but could you just elucidate a little more on what the town's share of that, given the 1.5 million dollars? Decide, you know, and, and again, I'm, I'm particularly concerned as I always am about keeping our place and not fuddle-duddling and losing 1.5 million dollars for this purpose because we didn't come up with a plan. So maybe you can talk about what we're in to this for. And what the consequence would be if we didn't get it.
Sure, your worship. So right now it's an 80, 20% split. So the town's portion will only be $300,000 with the additional 1.2 million coming from the fund, the COVID fund of the Government of Canada. And so if we lose it, it'll be gone for a while. And the problem is if we lose it, they'll say, well, the town really isn't that committed to seeing these things through. So it could, I won't say it will, but it could affect future funding as well. But I think we got to be ready to act on these things when they come through. That although surprised that it was approved on the second round, the application did go in a couple of years ago with a, a plan in the background to act on it. So I think it's important that council make, start the ball rolling and that the next council can continue with it to finalize it. And just a couple of things, your worship, I, I agree with what everybody said, the, the downtown plat area is, is too sensitive. It's gonna take a lot of consideration before we just implement something probably this summer. I think we could continue with the phase two of the pilot project that seemed to have some good things. Just to get that started, but certainly I'm not implying that we should just turn, create this loop. You know, this summer, it's gonna take a lot of work to get back on. The other thing that I didn't mention in the report that's also worth talking about is last year we had created, you know, put the barricades up on both sides of the parking lanes in order to encourage on-street park or on-street shopping. But except for a handful of, of businesses, not many people took into that. And so what staff had discussed last fall, that it might make a lot more sense like they do in Fredericton, where those that are interested in doing it, so let's say, no name of business, but let's say we open up our own pub at Town Hall along the front street there, that we just use two or three parking spaces and create a wooden walkway kind of around the face of, of the property. And that would eliminate having to run these bear, or you know, losing all of the parking. Because although we tried it, I think council made a fantastic effort in the, in the chamber, supported wholeheartedly as, as did the BIA. But as the shop owners got right down to it, they, I think it was too hard to manage having outside retail and inside. So there's only two or three of the restaurants. So that's something not mentioned in the report, but should be considered. At the time, Terry thought people could build these walkways between 1,500 and $2,000. The town could decide if we were the, gonna pay to have it done or we would do it or require the owners to, but that should also be as part of this deliberation. But I am gonna say this, we do have to make some decisions over the next couple of weeks, council. This pilot project, whatever we decide is gonna take some time to get the materials. So if we decide to go with those stanchions that have the nautical, gonna take public works a few weeks, you know, a few months to get enough of those to run up and down even two or three blocks. And so it's worth discussing. Hopefully we get direction by the meeting next week, if not by mid-March. So if we have the plans in place, we can get staff getting their resources together to, to put this in motion by like mid-June to late-June like we did in 2020.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spear. Any other questions or comments from council? Yes, your worship. Counselor Gru?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to indicate that looking at the, the costing analysis that was produced by staff, which is very good, thank you very much. Even the most expensive option, planters, to do the entire one-way route around Water Street and Prince of Wales is 182,650 for planters. And if we go with stanchions, nautical theme, it's $91,000. So we're not talking about a huge construction effort here. The, the challenge is making a decision. And, and I think that's, that's where I think we can play a big part in getting the ball rolling on making a decision. And we're gonna have to do something anyway for COVID-19. I think we all agree on that. So I think the downtown core decision is, is almost there. It's just a matter of do we continue all the way around the loop? And, and try and, and as a pilot project maybe, see how that works out for the town. And get, you know, do the consultation as the deputy mayor has suggested. And get this council to start the ball rolling. I think the option of doing nothing is, is really not an option at this point because we have to do something.
Right, exactly. I agree with you. The, the other thing I wanted to ask Mr. Spear to comment on for council and, and I know that council previously approved the route through town of the coastal trail network in terms of, and that's and, and that's fine. I don't think we need to go back on that, but what I don't know in an updated way, we have talked to them in the recent past, but not just recently. Where they're at in terms of, you know, I would hate to think that they're building towards us from outside and we're not, we're gonna let down on the bargain if we don't build our sections that they need for their connectors. Or on the other hand, they might tell us that they're three years away from building to the town in terms of outside of town, in terms of twinning, you know, putting bike lanes for the rest of Highway 127, right? Because I know Highway 127 is under reconstruction. But who knows how long that's gonna take in terms of the next two or three phases. They did two phases. One on each side last year. Do we know whether they're doing two more this year or whether that's all those kinds of things factor in in terms of the timing of this. But I think it's very important that we we're only gonna get one shot. And if we do it right, and every time you take money on that basis, it, it counts against your quota as far as I can see. So we better make sure we get everything we can out of this 1.5 million dollars. But my only other comment is I, and this is just reflecting what many people in council have already said this evening, is that I think the connector from Katie's Cove through to the cemetery is critically important. And it's really the biggest missing link. And most of it is either on someone else's property, meaning meaning the Algonquin, which I think we can negotiate something about. Property which causes very little problem in putting a separate trail on that side of the road. I think that's, that to me is almost a no-brainer for council to consider. So anyway, for what it's worth. Thank you, council. Anybody else?
Your worship, if, if I may, before we close, just I'd be remiss if I didn't, I didn't thank and thank and recognize some of the other counselors. Chris Spear, the CAO for all his hard work on this. Counselor Gru for supporting him in, in this application. I remember five years ago, we first met, my top priority was certainly having an active transportation plan. And here at the 11th and a half hour, we're, we've, we've got some funding, so it's, it's pretty exciting. Thank you to all the other counselors and also. Uh, thank you to all the other counselors, uh, and also our former counselor, uh, Dan Boyd. Uh, uh, remember when we all got on our uh bicycle helmets and got on stage and said we should have uh safe streets and uh for Ellen's Law, that was, that was a few years ago now. So this is a culmination of this announcement of funding is a culmination or possible, maybe looking good. Funding is uh the culmination of a lot of hard work and a lot of years and uh great news for the town of St. Andrews, and I wanted to thank and congratulate the other counselors for all their hard work. Thank you, worship.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Michelle. Yes.
Just a quick question, sorry. I, not to say that we do this, but I'm just wondering if we were eliminating uh parking on one side of the street, say permanently, say that's what comes through the consultation process and this council, the next one decides, um, is there an opportunity for uh parking for trails? And when I say that is, uh, if there was a large lot available in downtown St. Andrews, is that something of these funds could be in in lieu of designing a trail where that that costs? Because in a perfect world, you remove thirty spots, you find thirty more, is I guess what my point is. So I'm just wondering if if this money could be used for potentially trail parking.
I don't know, Mr. Spear.
Uh, that's it's it's excellent question, and I I can't really I'd say it'd be easier if it was an off-road somewhere, the way you created it to have. So let's say it was at Katie's Cove, still people access the trailhead in downtown. But to be honest, I have no idea. It's a good question. I can follow up to see what their thoughts are on that.
Your worship?
Counselor Group.
Thank you. I I would suggest, again, it's the same thing as um here i- is as the Brandy Cove Road situation, I think we have to be very careful that when we put in our submission, it's seen that it's it is for active transportation trails. And and if you start throwing in things like paving of roads or constructing parking lots, you're you're running a risk there that they they at the at the top levels, they say, well, this really isn't for active transportation trails, it's for associated infrastructure. And especially if you're building a parking lot in the middle of downtown. Um, that's pretty suspect, I would sus- I I I would suspect anyway, if I was doing the analysis. So you have to be very careful how you navigate that.
Thanks, Councilor Group. Um, look, we're getting close to to time here. Uh, we're moving on to uh the council committee meeting, so we'll have opportunity to to uh comment then. So I think I will look for a motion to adjourn so that we can reassemble for the next uh meeting.
Your, your worship, you do have a couple of questions that have come in through email, would you like me to?
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, so your worship, I only had two questions come through email, and uh, I will note for anybody on Facebook, if you wish for your comments to be provided to council, you need to email them to me, please. Um, so for uh council, this uh three questions came in from Vic Miller. Uh, and they are, is there a dollar figure or total amount on the grant that may be awarded to St. Andrews for the bike trail? I believe CEO Spear answered that already. One point two, if we're successful, one point two million dollars. And the second question was, is the award based on matching funds from the the town? And that was answered. And uh, what is the earliest date the funds? Sorry, go ahead, Chris. No, no, I was just going to say it's an eighty-twenty split. So, yeah, not matching funds. It's it's a good program. That usually it's one-third, one-third, one-third. In this case, it's eighty percent federal and twenty percent uh for the municipality. And then the earliest date the funds would be available to the town? Unknown until we're approved. So I'm going to say probably June or July, but we've we've started this process two years ago and we're just gotten this far. So until we get to the end, I won't know. And the final question we have uh came from Tyler Doherty, uh, was uh known of that several months ago, council was discussing uh, the end of Bar Road. Is this in the plans uh to fix this as well?
The end of Bar Road.
Uh, CEO Spear, you're on mute.
Yeah, I'm I'm might to make sure I understand the question. Are you talking about fixing uh, the end of the Bar Road, meaning where the pavement drops off and you get the potholes? Uh, which re- which really, that that's not really part of this discussion, but uh so uh, I think uh, maybe we'll have to take that one under advisement and uh and uh, we'll, we may have some further information for that later, but it's not part of this discussion.
Through your worship, those are all the questions that have come through email at this point.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Nopper. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Also move.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop. And the second, or Counselor Group, thank you. All in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned and we will uh let Mr. Nopper do his thing and we will then reconvene.
Just a reminder, council, it's a new lake, so you have.